Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting for July 1st, 2019. My name is Chris Dodson and with us today is Logan Showalter, our sign language interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Finance and Law, Reverend Burgess, Chair. Deferred Papers. Bill Number 2019-1338. Ordnance Amending, Supplementing, and Correcting the Pittsburgh Code at Title II. Fiscal Article I. Administrative Chapter 219. Operating Budget so as to add contract and bid information requirements to fiscal impact statements and to further correct numbering and formatting. New Papers. Bill Number 2019-1800. Resolution authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to request the transfer of a portion of certain lot now part of Inright Park Lot in East Liberty Neighborhood of the city of Pittsburgh to Penley Park Inc., I mean Penley Park South Inc. in exchange for a budding parcel of land of approximately equal size and value, the subject property to be transferred from PPS to the city of Pittsburgh for consolidation with use as part of Inright Parklet plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the city and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the Court of the city authorized and/or direct. Bill Number 2019-1801. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $3,900 and no cents in favor for Medical Legal, Inc., 2009 McKenzie Way, Suite 100 Cranberry Township, PA 16066 for expert witness services related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Human Resources Committee, Ms. Harris is the Chair. New Papers. Bill Number 2019-1809, which is the ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct, Article V Discrimination, Chapter 659, Unlawful Practices, Section Subsection 659.O2, Unlawful Employment Practices, Subsection 659.O3, Unlawful Housing Practices, and Subsection 659.O4, Unlawful Public Accommodation Practices to explicitly prohibit employment, housing, and public accommodation discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression. Create more inclusive definitions of protected classes and add gender-inclusive language. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. New Papers. 2019-1803. Is ordinance accepting a new street name, Beehive Street in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in February 2019. The name listed in the ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 2019-1804. Ordnance accepting a new street name, Eliza Street in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in February 2019. The name listed in the ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 2019-1805. Ordnance accepting a new street name, Guadalupe Place in the 25th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee, CPAC. The following street name was approved by CPAC in May 2019. The name listed in the ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 2019-1806. Ordnance accepting a new street name, Hopper Place in the 6th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee, CPAC. The following street name was approved by CPAC in April 2019. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strasburger is the Chair. New Papers. Resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or director of Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contract agreement or agreements with the prime government solutions for a legislative management system. The total cost over five years should not exceed $255,912. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. Deferred Papers. Bill Number 2018-0983. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to execute a claim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all of the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and designated city-owned properties to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the fights and rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties. Bill Number 2019-1735. Resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license, license number R-2778, from Gregory's Restaurant, Inc., 1199 Washington Pike, Bridgeville, PA 15017, to the applicant, Woods House, LLC 4604 Monongahela Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15207, for the premises located at 4604 Monongahela Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15207, restaurant known as Woods House pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code at 4-461. New Papers. Bill Number 2019-1807. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facility plan for Bobby Wallow 200 Ingrid Place Carnegie, PA 15106. Bill Number 2019-1808. Resolution authorizing the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement to execute the Alka-Sand Service Agreement Amendment by and among the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, the Western Westmoreland Municipal Authority, the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority, and the Township of North Huntington, the Penn Township Sewage Authority, and the Township of Penn regarding the Cavitzville This concludes the reading for July 1st, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh Standing Committee Meeting of Monday, July 1st, 2019. First order of business, public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means your time has begun. The white, the yellow light means you have one minute to summarize. The red light means your time has expired. I also want to remind everyone that rules of council state that common is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted in order to be maintained at all times. Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Pittsburgh City West End, Boston City, Massachusetts. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Founder of the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary Incorporated in Pennsylvania and New York. Global Intelligence Society Nationwide and the Global Information and Intelligence Network. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the positive value of competitive democratic Could you please stop talking over there to my left?
Doctor, that's really not your say-so.
Why not?
If you address council, it's your entire. You can use your whole time wherever you want. You have three minutes.
This person should not be talking.
You have three minutes.
Do all of you Pittsburgh City Representatives encourage the participation of candidates with different ideas in competitions for Pittsburgh City District Representative, um, positions of council, Pennsylvania Governor, and President of the United States who are members of Libertarian, Green, Constitution, Working Families, Reform, Natural Law, Progressive, American Freedom, American Better for America, Conservative, Ecology, Justice, Labor, Liberty Union, Moderate, Peace and Freedom, Prohibition, Socialism, United Citizens, Women's Equality, Working Class Parties? And the answer is no. Do you individual, individuals who represent the inane Democrat, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Paduto, Mr. de Blasio, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Biden, push formats for debate 2020 and 2021 which include candidates from these parties? No. Do you assure us of the rightness of CNN and MSNBC in serving as anti-information, pro-ideology, conduits of Democratic Party propaganda, Fox News for the Republican Party? Yes. At the risk of his life, George Washington read a Dunlap copy of the U.S. Declaration of Independence publicly in New York City late July 1776. Would George Washington think this DPRP system, worth dying for, take Trump's vulgar narcissism to be worthy of valley forage? I think not.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speaker, we ask that you would, clerk, recall the roll.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
President Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith?
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. I request the members of council, we're going to go out of order. We'd like you to go to the back of the agenda, which is the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Connor is the Chair. We have a supplemental paper.
Bill 1828. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into a three-party agreement or the use of existing agreements between the city and PWSA and Ellsler Landscapes, Inc. as the general contractor for Reitman Park Improvement Project at a cost not to exceed $1,858,319.61, which includes a 7% construction contingency.
Need a motion, Mr. Carter?
Motion approved.
You have a second.
Second.
Mr. Carter? Second. This is the bill we waived the rules on. This is in Councilwoman Strasburger's district. She's very supportive. This is to redo White Men Playground with the PWSA and Stormwater Management.
All right, taught my kids to play basketball at.
There you go. See?
All right. Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We also are skipping around. If you would go to the Human Resources Committee, which is on page four. We have a new paper. Mrs. Harris is the Chair. Could you read the new paper for me?
Bill 1809. Witnesses Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct, Article V Discrimination, Chapter 659. Unlawful Practices, Unlawful Employment Practices, Unlawful Housing Practices, Unlawful Public Accommodation Practices to explicitly prohibit employment, housing, and public accommodation discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression. Create more inclusive definitions of protected classes and add gender-inclusive language.
Need a motion, Ms. Harris.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Could you introduce yourself?
Introduce yourself.
Megan Stanley, interim director of the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. Were charged with enforcing Chapter 659 of the City Code.
Okay.
So what we wanted to do here, you may know that gender expression and gender identity were previously listed in City Code. However, they were only listed under the definition of discrimination. They were not technically unlawful practices. For us to enforce discrimination laws, we have to have definitions in code and we have to have updated definitions. So we are proposing to add definitions for gender identity and gender expression, which previously did not have a definition, and also update the definition for sexual orientation to be more inclusive, as well as the definition of sex, which was previously defined erroneously as gender. So clarifying those terms and also expanding protections to all areas, housing, employment, and public accommodations.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Strasburger?
Thank you. Yes, so Council President Kraus and I are co-sponsors of this legislation and we felt as it was brought to our attention exactly what Ms. Stanley just outlined, that it was important to become, as a modern city, to have modern definitions for these terms and to add in definitions for terms like gender expression and gender identity, which, as mentioned, were in the code but did not have actual definitions for. And to make sure that if we're a city for everybody, that we have a city code that reflects that.
I should also mention, we were adding gender-neutral pronouns because previously it said things like technically only men could own homes and things like that. So making sure that we are gender-neutral in our city code as much as possible.
Well, you still think they're more powerful than women.
We believe that women can do it, too.
Agree.
Any other conversation?
I can't say it better than it's been said. Thank you, Megan, for your help. And thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
All those, Ms. Gross?
Sorry. Thank you. Megan, while you're here, could you speak for a minute if you're involved in the anniversary celebration for next Monday night?
Sure. The Changing the Want ads premiere. So it'll be the 50th anniversary of the city ordinance that made segregated by sex help-wanted ads illegal in the city of Pittsburgh. This was actually a commission-initiated case, the city of Pittsburgh versus the Pittsburgh Press. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, so it was really a landmark decision for us. So Pat Ulbrich is part of the In Sisterhood Project, has filmed a documentary about this. It was filmed in part at the commission. David Washington, the director from 50 years ago, was part of it and will be there. And so we hope that 50 years from now, people will look at this legislation in the same way.
That's fantastic. I'm sorry to say that we have an advertised public hearing for the same evening at City Council, um, which is, yeah, so we just are realizing the conflict. So members are scheduled, I think, at 6:00 on the evening of July 8th to be here in chambers. What time is your event?
Uh, it will start at 7:00.
So who knows? If we have a really quick public hearing, we may be able to come celebrate with you. But I just wanted to be sure that you, I was just finding out about it today as well. So I just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to acknowledge how significant the anniversary is. And I'm obviously supportive of this change as well. I feel like we've been making kind of iterative improvements in the kind of legal standing. We had the, we've had the intentions of right protections for a long time, but as the kind of law evolves, we are also kind of keeping up and even, I think, staying at the forefront of the kind of legal protections that we're affording. So thank you for your help in making sure that we have kind of closed up this little loophole as well.
Yes, thank you. The city is at the forefront. I'm speaking next month in Philadelphia because we are one of the cities that is really, being really progressive with gender identity and the, the pregnancy legislation that was passed a few months ago. So thank you all for your support.
Absolutely. And thank you for catching this one as well. And so it's put us on even firmer standing. I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the front of the, front of the agenda, goes to the Finance and Law Committee, at which I am the Chair. We have deferred papers.
Bill 1338. Ordnance Amending, Supplementing, and Correcting the Pittsburgh Code at Title II. Fiscal Article I Administrative. Operating Budget so as to add contract and bid information requirements to fiscal impact statements and to further correct numbering and formatting.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
And I just want to thank the Women's Caucus for working on this, in particular, Councilwoman Strasburger, who returned from maternity leave to, to help with this. So I'll defer to you if you want.
All right, this amendment?
There's an amendment. I'm deferring to her.
Ms. Strasburger?
There is an amendment on the table which takes into account some of the recommendations that the Law Department suggested. Really, the purpose of the overall, not just the amendment, but the overall legislation is to provide council members, when there is an agreement or a contract that we're considering, that we have the information that we sometimes are asking those at the table for, that they aren't prepared to answer. So the names and qualifications of the contractor that's being recommended, but also information about the other contractors that bid on the project, the EORC synopsis and recommendation, electronic copies of the RFP, RFQ, or RFI. So those types of, just making it more transparent what the process was and making sure that we have all the relevant info prior to voting on it. And then the one thing that was just added at the request of the administration was that we enact this six months after the passage so that there's actually time to, for departments to prepare for this.
Because they're not doing it right?
Because they're not doing it at all right.
Is this, I need to, so is this a motion, is this just an amendment or is it amendment by substitution?
Is it on, yeah, both bills or just?
It's by substitution.
So can I, got you. I need, I would entertain a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Need a second?
Second.
All right. The motion amendments have always been, the amendment has already been discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us now to the amended bill. Comment on the amended bill, starting with Councilwoman Smith and then Councilwoman Gross.
I also just want to thank Bill Urbanic's office and Bill Urbanic for his, for their work on this, and Reverend for your indulgence as we were working on stuff under your committee. But I do want to say that, you know, the Women's Caucus got involved in this because we just have a lot of concerns about some of the ways things are being done. And not in particular with one administration, but for years to come, we want to make sure that things are done in a way that's very transparent. And I just want to, again, reiterate that it was the Women's Caucus working on this and, and bringing this to light. I'm really impressed that you got a response from the Law Department so quickly, Councilwoman Strasburger, because there's things I've been asking for, for quite some time and haven't had a chance to hear back from them yet. So hopefully they'll be as eager to respond to me on some things as they are for this legislation.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you.
Right. I think this is, again, we've had this discussion before. This is the right discussion to be having about transparency and so that we all have the same information, not just council and the administration, but also the public, right? That, that these things will be coming to the table will also make them, I think, the kind of fresh air of daylight onto these processes so everyone can feel comfortable. And it's consistent with the administration's goals of increasing transparency and accountability. So that, I think we can continue this work. This is a great first step. We've also seen our authorities being better about reporting and sharing bids and giving information, especially on the WBE, the MBE, the DVBE. And I know that we've made strides at, at PWSA. So I look forward to working on this portion of Chapter 161, and I think there may actually be more work that we can do. So I'm supportive and thank you again, Councilwoman Strasburger, for being able to pull it all together for us so we can get rid of this part.
And you too, because you did a lot of work on it prior to that, so thank you.
All right. Motion to approve on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. All right. That takes us to, let's get rid of the next bill. We have a new bill, please.
Bill 1800. Resolution authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city to petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to request the transfer of a portion of certain lot now part of the Inright Parklet in the East Liberty Neighborhood of the city to Penley Park South, Inc. in exchange for an abutting parcel of land approximately equal size and value as a subject property to be transferred from PPS to the city for consolidation with and use as part of Inright Parklet plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the city and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the court or the city authorized in or direct.
Actually, you can read the next two because they're going to both be held. Well, we'll do, we'll do one at a time. Different reasons.
Motion to hold for public hearings.
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. The public hearing is discussed by happening on July 15th in the evening at 6:00. We'll try to confirm that as soon as possible, but that's the tentative date. Next bill, please.
Bill 1801. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of $3,900 in favor of Medical Legal, Inc. for expert witness services related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold for a second.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Before we go to the invoice, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Uh...
You want to untable a bill, I think?
Motion to untable Bill 698.
Second.
Second. There's a motion to table, untable. We need a roll call vote on the motion to untable.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
President Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell?
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
All right. The bill is now on the, the bill is not, is now untabled, is on the table. Councilwoman Strasburger, do you want to make, I will accept the motion to amend by substitution.
Anyone who can, who is present. Right?
It's a different amendment, a different bill.
So I would like to make a motion to amend by substitution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That brings us to Bill 0698. Ms. Strasburger?
So I'm happy to provide a brief, a brief synopsis of what this is. So there, as discussed, the Women's Caucus has been working and discussing for many, many months procurement more generally. And while we must, I think we need to revisit that larger discussion, it was brought to my attention, thanks to the budget, the Council Budget Office, Bill Urbanic, the Law Department, that state law actually requires us to have processes in place for the case of a tie, when there's a tie, when a, when there are two bidders that tie, and then a bid protest. So we don't actually have a process in place for someone to protest a bid. And we need that language in city law so we don't get sued, essentially. I'm happy to leave it at that, and if other people have questions, to call Mr. Urbanic to the table to answer further.
Any other conversation? Thank you very much for your work. See no other conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Positive recommendation. Takes us to the invoices. Invoices on the table. Need a motion for the invoices?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation about the invoices? See no conversation about invoices? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. There are no intergovernmental transfers, interdepartmental transfers, rather. There are P cards. P cards are on the table. Need a motion for the P cards?
To move.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation about the P cards? See no conversation about P cards? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That takes us, I believe, to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee on page four of your agenda. We do have a new paper.
Your 1803, ordinance accepting a new street name Beehive Street in the 15th Ward of the city as recommended by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee.
Madam Clerk, do you want to read them all, please? They're all new street names.
Bill 1804, ordinance accepting a new street name Eliza Street in the 15th Ward of the city. Bill number 1805, ordinance accepting a new street name Guadalupe Place in the 25th Ward of the city as per recommended by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill number 1806, ordinance, ordinance accepting a new street name Hopper Place in the 6th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Mrs. Gross?
Yes, absolutely. I'm totally supportive, and I think they're all lovely names.
Invoices. Oh, they're not there.
They are. I'd like to be head straight.
Aye.
These are new streets.
All right.
I got this.
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. All right, we're having multiple conversations at the same time, and I'm trying to assist councilpeople at the same time. That brings us to...
I'm abstaining right now on the P cards because I don't have them.
Well, you asked for two different things. The invoice, here's the P cards right here.
I have the invoice.
Here's the P cards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we already voted through both the invoices and the P cards.
Well, you have me as an abstention.
We have you as an abstention. All right, that exhausts...
If we're racing through this.
I'm sorry, I will go slower.
Thank you.
That takes us, I believe, to page five in my agenda. I know your agenda is a different number, so I'm not sure the number in your agenda. There is Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management Committee. Ms. Strasburger is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1815, resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or agreement with prime government solutions for a legislative management system. The total cost over five years shall not exceed $255,912.
I need a motion, Mrs. Strasburger.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, conversation. Ms. Strasburger?
It's my understanding that the legislative management software that we're currently using, that multiple departments, authorities, boards, commissions could be using are, is so outdated that essentially, from what I understand, no other city in the country uses it. So we need to upgrade and change, change legislative management systems. And a committee was formed to assess what the best one could be, and this was the one that I understand to be chosen. And it will, there will be a one-time fee for us to, essentially what we are paying every year to allow for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but if, essentially the fee that we are paying every single year to allow for boards, authorities, and commissions to access our software, which they are not currently using, will be the equivalent of the one-time fee we pay for this software and once, and that's it. So we will actually, over the course of 10 years, or however many years, be saving that amount of money. So that's the information that I have and that was shared with me.
Thank you very much. Other conversation, Ms. Gross?
Thank you. So I'm curious about the capacity. Madam Clerk, are you able to answer some questions?
I am, yes.
Thank you. So there's so much more that I'm sure other cities are enjoying in terms of capacity than, than we've had. For example, in this legislative management system, will members also be able to kind of track things more than, this would be the same system that would be showing us our, our agendas and text files and all that kind of stuff? So it's not only about what, no?
No, this, this system will actually be used by the entire city, number one, because currently what we have is only being used in the city clerk's office.
When you say what we have, you're talking about Legistar.
Legistar, Granica's.
Okay, just want to be sure.
Yes, Legistar, Granica's is actually one company, but they're still operating two separate pieces of software that we're importing and exporting from one to the other. But this software will be under one umbrella and certainly more user-friendly than what we currently have and have more capabilities of what we have.
Can you talk to those abilities a little bit?
Okay.
I was trying to kind of imagine what they were, but you can tell me what they are.
So this system will be 100% totally web-based, meaning one of the main features is that you'll be able to research, do everything that you need to do, pull information, pull your agendas, the attachments, in a form that you can actually pull it on this device, any device that you have that we currently cannot do. Granica's Legistar currently, you have to have a desktop in order to pull up the total format. But this will actually allow you to be anywhere in the world and pull this up on any type of device, whether it be Android or Apple, Mac, anything that you need, any type of device that you have. That's one of the main features. It will also translate into different languages. So there will be, you know, an opportunity for anybody that need to, need translation to access that through this. It have a lot of other features that we're able to track our legislation. It does not, it prevents us from using the same number for legislation right now. Currently, you can put in any number. We can use the same number over, 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 you know, and over. This won't allow us to do that. Boards and commissions will be another piece that we will manage in the city clerk's office from this, you know, once we get this.
Can you speak a little bit to that in more detail?
Can you also do it on paper?
Uh, Councilwoman, I have the floor.
She didn't mention paper.
I have the floor.
So boards and commissions, we currently don't manage. Right now, we pay for boards and commissions with our last contract with Granica's Legistar, but nobody manages it. So we're taking that module in the city clerk's office, and we will be managing the boards and commissions piece. So you'll be able to see in real time who's on, who's off, when their term expires. It'll be able to, you know, we're hoping to get ticklers to send to us to say, hey, in the next six months, this person will expire, to give us a heads up, to, you know, notify.
So they have official reporting would also be tracked, like?
Yes.
We have legislative calendars. So for example, this recently, you know, I'm thinking about all the kind of zoning legislation or planning legislation that we have coming back and forth. So those calendars, would those also be in there?
They will.
Okay, so like official, right now, I don't see, probably in the final packet, like after it's been back to standing committee, there would be like the Planning Commission report on something like that. We just had like the recommendation from its current legislation now with the inclusionary zoning amendment.
Right.
Right, so that report would be more robust or easier for the public to see or anything like that?
Well, we're...
Is that what you're talking about? Like we, you know, it helps to integrate boards and commissions? Is that what we're talking about?
Absolutely, absolutely. It will be able to pull all of those pieces together that we currently don't have the capabilities to do.
What about authority board reports? Like, right now, you go to like the PWSA website, and those board reports are there, but are those not what you're thinking about?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't manage it to that effect.
Okay, so it will be available on any device?
Absolutely.
It translates languages? We'll be able to kind of track things that influence, that are, you know, have dependencies with council actions and things like that?
Absolutely.
Is there any other kind of?
I think the thing that stands out the most is, you know, to be able to actually start to have the city itself to introduce their legislation electronically. Currently, now we're doing everything paper-wise. We'll be printing all legislation from the city clerk's office after we implement this system, and the departments won't have to submit, you know, print it out and put it on that legislation paper. We're going to be doing that here in this office because everything will be done electronically. And we are, you know, slowly moving toward the paperless whereby, you know, we don't have to manually carry around legislation anymore. So this system will allow us to train the entire city, everybody that creates legislation, to actually do it electronically, to share it, to send it from department to department without having to, you know, physically walk it over. Include the maps, it will allow us. One of the things, too, is zoning, the maps, and some of our legislation can be thick. We currently, the system we currently have cuts it off at a certain point. This would allow...
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah, it cuts it off, and it doesn't tell us that it's cut it off on page 10. It just cuts it off, you know? So this legislation would allow us to input all of our maps, all of our photos, all of our attachments without any problems.
Something to ease you.
And in the formats. So what we're looking at now, the invoices, the P cards, we'll be able to integrate in Excel form instead of having separate sheets for this. It'll, it'll incorporate all of that in as well, so we're looking forward to this.
That's very good news. I know, I hear from constituents often, we're trying to help them track down things because it's hard to search for members of the public.
It is, it is.
So I'm hoping that that will be a little bit easier.
It will be.
Um, because, you know, it sometimes just seems finicky.
Yeah.
Like you might search for a term and it doesn't work, and you try the next, seems like you try the next day and it does work, and you don't know, you can't figure out why it isn't finding the thing that you're looking for. I get that feedback a lot.
We're having a lot of issues with Granica's Legistar.
Yeah, so we don't want, you know, if we, we have these systems, we want them to be dependable, reliable system, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
It's a big deal, I think, how switching our legislative software. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Smith.
I just want to say, I think the more we become consumer-friendly with, with different computer programs, the less friendly we actually are becoming because it's so much information. It's information overload, and people do not know how to access all this stuff because there's just so much. I'm happy that we are doing this because I've had problems myself with Legistar and I, you know, when I've searched from home or other places. So I am happy that we are doing this, but I just want to say, in general, I just think we need to really look at all these things that we're making available to the public and figure out a way that's, that makes it user-friendly. Right, because there's a lot of people that just don't want to take the time to do, but they want to look something up really quickly. And I, it's just, there's just too many different apps now, too many different sites to go to. So I just want to say for that, I hope that we...
Legistar, Granica's is complex to, to research for anybody, you know? So this system will be a one, on the one umbrella, and it will, you'll be able to just put in just common words and pull up exactly what you need and everything attached to it.
And that's, I mean, that's how it should be for all the, but there's just too many in general. I just think we need to centralize some of this information and make it more easy, accessible, easily accessible and user, and user-friendly.
This is a step toward that.
Yeah, I mean, not just one program, all programs.
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
And we'll still be able to pull it out in paper.
We'll still print paper for as long as anybody requests paper.
Any other conversation? See no conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. All right, I believe that takes us back to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Connor is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 983, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to execute a quick claim deed and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying, as is, all of the city's right title in interest, if any, and designated city-owned properties to the URA for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and director of finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to hold three weeks.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Takes us to next bill, please.
Bill 1735, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from Gregory's Restaurant, Inc. to the applicant's Woods House for the premises located at 4604 Monague Hala Street Restaurant known as Woods House.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Connor?
I just want to thank Council President Kraus for holding this public hearing. I was out of town last week, but we're really excited about the Woods House. This coming Tuesday, I will be attaching some neighborhood agreements to this bill, but I just want to thank him for running that meeting and thank everybody for being supportive. We're excited to get that started.
Okay, motion to approve on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. We have a new paper.
Bill 1807, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for Bobby Wallow.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Last bill on the agenda, I believe. Oppusers nay? Last bill on the agenda, I believe.
Bill 1808, resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement to execute the Alka-Sand Service Agreement Amendment by and among the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, the PWSA, the Westmoreland Municipal Authority, the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority, the Township of North Huntington, the Penn Township Sewer Authority, and the Township of Penn regarding the Cavitzville-Ardara era.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing no conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppusers nay? Alright, I have some announcements. Next Tuesday, July 9th at 1:30. Well, first of all, reminder that the clerk and the council office will be closed this Thursday in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Happy 4th of July to everybody. Next Tuesday, July 9th at 1:30, council will hold exec session on Bill 2019 as it relates to a warrant. Also, on Tuesday, July 9th, council will hold up both a cablecast post-agenda and a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2019-1775 as it relates to PWSA cooperation agreement. The post-agenda will be at 2:00 PM, and the public hearing will be at 6:00 PM, both here in council chambers. On Wednesday, July 10th, with afternoon sessions at 1:00 and 1:45, the URA has requested to brief council members and/or their staff on the URA strategic plan updates. Anything for members? Ms. Smith?
I just want to acknowledge that there's going to be several changes in our police stations, our police zones. And in our area, Zone 6, Commander Vinansky, who's been with us for three years, is being transferred to Zone 5. And he's just done a tremendous amount for our areas. I do want to assure the public, we're going to do something to acknowledge him and his work. And I just want to say, it's a difficult time, because we really got to know him. He's gotten a lot of great relationships with the people in our community. He's helped Sister Mary, who's come down here for the Save a Life Today event. He made sure cadets would come every year, feed the kids and families. He's gone to, you know, just numerous, countless events. I can't even tell you all that he's done. It's been so much. In just three years, he has really made an impact in our area. And I didn't think I'd like anybody after we lost Chief Schubert, and then Lando, and then we had Raglin. I mean, we lost some really good commanders. So, then when he came in, I was, kind of had my own wall up. I didn't even want to like him, to be honest with you. And then he came, and it was so impressive. And, I mean, he really is like this nice. I'm thinking, I'm thinking he was just, you know, doing his thing, you know, police community relationship, but he actually really cared. And that's the part that I saw, that I thought, wow, this guy's really nice, really good. And so, I think Zone 5 is going to be lucky to have him. I hope that, that they appreciate him the way that we've come to appreciate him in Zone 6. But I will say that it's going to be a really difficult transition for us, because we've become so familiar with both him, not only him, but his family, and he, the level of what he expects his officers to do in terms of community relationship building has been astounding. And you could really see the expectations, and how they've increased over the years. So, I just want to wish him very well. And, and, you know, we had Chief Schubert, and so, for a long time before, he was our commander, before he was a chief. And I want to say, that was a hard person to lose, because he was really great. And I do trust his judgment. I keep hoping he changes his mind. But I think that, I just want to acknowledge that there are some changes, and that we really do appreciate Commander Vinansky right now, and trust Chief Schubert to make the right decisions.
Ms. Gross?
Thank you. First of all, I have conflicting information from my staff. I said that the public hearing is on the 8th, but now they're saying it's on the 9th. So, we don't have a conflict with the 50th anniversary. So, again, the 50th anniversary celebration of Human Relations is on Monday, July 8th, 7, no, at Highmark or someplace. And then, but our public hearing on the co-op agreement for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority is at 6 o'clock on the 9th. Did I say that right? Okay, so, just wanted to clear that up. And then, secondly, Madam Clerk, we just voted on a sewer module that, on Bill 1807, that says official sewer facility plans for Bobby Wallow, 200 Ingrid Place, Carnegie, PA 15106. And typically, our bills, the title of the bill should refer to the location for the sewer module. The location for the sewer module is in the text file, which is Harrison Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15201, 4920 Harrison Street, which is in Lawrenceville. And so, it's odd that we have like the owner, the property owners, like, I don't know if that's his residential address, but it's not a sewer module for Carnegie. So, it should be, the sewer module title should refer to the location for the development, which is in the city, which is in Lawrenceville. And so, secondly, this seems to be, I've been holding one, because it hadn't actually gone through all of its planning approvals, and not, or even its PWSA tap-in approval. And so, usually, our sewer modules come after we know that, that actually can be tapped into the system, and that the, the development can actually happen that way, because it's gone through the planning department. And it's not clear to me that this one does, because it says the sentence, "The city must adopt and submit to DEP for its approval," and is a planned addition to the sewer facilities plan and the planning module. So, I'm going to be checking on this before Tuesday, to